Call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all called, we're all here. Any additions or releases to your agenda?
I have some. Check numbers three, four, four, one, four, through three, four, four, one, nine, and ACHs one, zero, four, three, three, through one, zero, four, three, four, for a total of ten thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and I gave you each other. And insert that, so you can take a look at it. And then, um, I, this numbered a couple of pages, so, under the admin section, I, year four, that should be page twenty-eight, and then, under new business, B, should be page twenty-nine. And Brad got called back to work, so he won't be able to be here, but, um, he gave me notes, too.
Does that include everything that's on the agenda for him?
Yes.
Any other additions to your agenda?
I may possibly have one. Um, I, I did touch base, with a fellow council member earlier today, and, um, I don't know if it's something that we need to, uh, form a committee on, but we need to revamp, uh, some of the regulations for the Motley Night Day. So, uh, that needs to...
Revamp some what?
Regulations for the Motley Night Day. Just guidelines. We don't need to, like, make rules or anything, just guidelines for people to go, um, by, so, and... If we call them that, nobody will come. So, would you like that on our new business? Yeah, yeah. Because, um, we just need to have some, some structure, instead of people just doing what they're doing, because, um...
Clean up day, right?
Yeah. So I don't know if that's something that I need to form a committee for, or if that's just something that I... I think that we should all put our heads together. I know Al, you had someone...
I think I should call them.
Yeah.
Well, we got time, we got time to do it, because this cleanup day isn't coming for a while.
Right. So, before the Motley Night Day, it's just something that definitely needs to be addressed. So that's the only thing that I have there.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. And A and B, under consent. The addition is... It's added to it, right?
Right.
There are motions to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Any addition? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion carried. Summary of May twelfth meeting performance evaluation for Cook-Treasure-Brutherton. Highly satisfactory with fifty-three point two out of fifty-six point possible. Awesome.
Which is a huge congratulations and a good bow.
Thank you.
For John Hope, Dan, and you, as Mickey had said.
Thanks. Thanks, Department reports. Planning and zoning. Any additions, Paul?
Just the garage sale ordinance, I see there's a few pages on there. Is that something new in this staff?
At the last planning and zoning meeting, I was asked to, um, look into our garage sale ordinance, and what I found was that we had a garage sale ordinance in the code, old code, but when the new city code was adopted, nobody caught that that was left out. So now we'll have to, if we want a garage sale ordinance, we'll have to adopt a new one. So I put in there, on pages eighteen and nineteen, are the old ordinance. And, um, page sixteen and seventeen are just something I found and wrote up, um, just for council to look over and see if this is good to you, or if you want to change anything, I can bring it to, give it to Katie for the planning and zoning. It is a land use ordinance, so there will have to be a public hearing to adopt it. So, if it can be... If you guys can look at it and see, um, if it looks good to you, I'll send it to Katie, and she'll do what she needs to do at the planning and zoning meeting, and then, um, for a public hearing, it has to be closed to ten days ahead of time. In a public hearing, they'll get them next.
Next council meeting?
Yeah.
Are we looking at the one that's on sixteen and seventeen?
Yeah, that's the one I came up with.
Do we want to add the, um... I think it was a word.
Number two?
No, um... I don't think that's fundraising, but...
Well, that would be...
There was a resident that had a town and garage sale that called it something other, so I didn't have to buy it by the garage sale.
Sure.
I brought that up to town when we discussed it, but the way this reads residential permits anyway, so I don't think it would even cover that. And it's such a gray area, if we add a commercial, right?
I think so, because a lot of businesses put in outside for sale, yeah.
I just thought that that, was it Steve from, sorry, spoke about building for Katie? We kind of shortly discussed this, and he said there was some sort of verbiage we could put in there to cover that. But...
But calling it something other than what it is to get by is what Al was saying, is, is calling it a superficial name, when it's, it's clearly still a garage sale, whether it's residential or commercial. However, it's some, it's calling it something that it's not. You know, I...
I just know you, I think you should look at it, just in case, while you're redoing it, otherwise you may miss it and not come back.
And go through...
I think, I think generally speaking, the problem is commercial. It's not as much residential complaints as it is on the commercial side, that they're always having stuff. You know, we just gotta make sure that we got it in somehow, or however you want to do it, it's your, your decision.
But also protect the business owners who are selling stuff pertaining to their business and not using it.
I think if it's a business, like a washer business or pressure washer, they should be able to pull a couple of pressure washers out, although I don't think that's a problem. But when there's, probably coming from all over.
Is it something we have Katie check into and then see if we can add any for her picture?
I will make a note on here, and I'll email her, so she's prepared to have something at Monday's meeting. Um, the other thing that was brought forward to me about this is, um, on section four, where it says, um, a maximum of free signs may be displayed.
Does it, anybody think that's too few? I mean, that's too restrictive?
I think so, but...
You think it should be more?
We should be able to allow a few more. I mean, I don't know, you know, Pat, if you had a sale, you had one signed by your driveway, one next block over, one on this over, wouldn't you want a couple more out here, nine-way town?
Yeah, I think five would be more reasonable, so...
Yeah. For some, you could go on a highway, directing you down there, and then you have them close to the house. Definitely hard with my thought, it's something to be careful.
I was gonna say, does it even matter? They have to be removed within twenty-four hours anyways.
But there are people who are signing on every street for the same sale. Or they go all the way, they start at Staples, and go all the way to Motley.
So then does that need some regulations?
I think so, as a person who goes to correct.
You've got, or signed it?
Less signed it. So you want me to ask Katie to talk about that at the meeting, too?
If she has a recommendation.
Or how? Because...
All right, anything else? Anybody have anything? So we'll bring this to the P and X, P and Z meeting.
Right.
Which is, type one of it yet?
Are there any other changes, anybody, like, to be considered at that time? Got between now and then to read it through and see if you're comfortable with it. Anything else for planning and zoning?
Um, you have a fire report on page twenty. And there's six medicals, one MVA, with a total of seven calls. The fire chief's retirement date will be July first. And at that, I believe there's a medium fire department meeting on July first, and they will, um, decide who will keep the new chief at that time.
Is that decision already made, do you know? And they're just gonna announce it?
Um, tentatively, I don't know for sure.
So this would have been his...
They have a board yet?
Oh, they have, okay.
So this would have been his last council meeting?
Correct. He got here and then had to turn around.
He's not going around, already got that.
Yeah.
Um, number three is pool fills and fee schedules. It's getting to be not worth it to them. So, they are thinking either forget doing pool fills altogether, or possibly doubling or even tripling the fees. Right now, they charge fifty dollars for each tanker load that they bring. Water fees are on top of that. And then it's twenty-dollar flat rate for out of town. And they're thinking, well, should at least double, and maybe even triple. Um, or they're fine with saying forget it altogether and are not gonna do it. Staples doesn't do it anymore. Um, he said it's too much of a liability. Um, if we still wanna offer that service, then he is saying, um, right now, we say it ten miles, up to ten miles away, but we don't wanna go in, um, outside of our fire territory. So like, Staples is only seven miles away, they won't do it, but we can't hook on to their water system, so we have to go... I don't really understand the whole thing, this is what he told me.
In the past, they've always done it, and you don't have to be a city resident, they've gone out?
Well, I mean, the city of Motley goes all the way up to Leder and Orton. So yeah, they've done some right outside of town, some regular regular customers every year.
So there is regular customer in every year?
Yeah, like two, three.
And did one last year pay up, or not?
I can't remember, there was one, but we, that is, um, we won't send them out until they have money.
Are they looking for, as you, your recommendation from us, or...
Um, Brad said Mickey was at the meeting when they discussed it, so she kinda knows what they...
Well, basically, just like you said, yeah, it's either scratch it all or increase it. So they want council to make the decision.
For whatever it's worth, if it's, uh, just my feeling, I think it would be nice, especially if I'm not, but if I had a pool, it'd be tough filling it out of the well. I would suggest, again, just my opinion, like, double it. Hundred, hundred bucks or a hundred and fifty, and then a mileage. So we're not going like Leder and that kinda stuff.
You mean like a ten miles? But he does, they, he was, um, specific, he didn't want to go outside of our fire territory.
Right, and I, I agree with that. And I don't think it happens that often. It was, you know, every week type thing or something.
It, there's a pool season, like, so everybody wants their stuff at the same time. Brian runs it as a mom, and that's all, it's kind of a lot for him after hours to go do. And, um, now that Staples isn't doing it anymore, we've been getting calls about running, so we would have to say no to those ones.
You would put in our fire district?
Yeah.
Steve, you want to quick, quick, you were thinking of doing a motion?
Well, yeah, I guess we have a conversation after the second, but it's not cut and dried on my feeling, but I'll just see what everybody else thinks. I'll make a motion, a hundred and fifty dollars and seven miles.
Or do we say, um, fire district? Not seven miles?
Cause seven miles, we're, we're in Staples. Seven miles and within a fire district, just where fire district goes more than seven miles. Does it...
Yeah, it goes a fourteen miles, so, for always.
Well, little help, uh, you know, I'm not familiar with, uh, you probably know.
My biggest concern, and that is the big L-word, and that's what Brad moves himself, and that's liability. And I mean, if we're looking at one or two people here, then I would say just scratch it all together. I see what you're saying, Steve, but are we waiting to options here? Even a staple notice, our client doesn't want us to go there. I mean, if we were to pick up what they don't have...
But that...
But we can't, cause they're not using our fire district, so...
Yeah, even a hundred and fifty dollars.
It's not really worth Brian's time.
Firing up the diesel and doing all that, I understand that also.
Right.
Nothing to, with your, uh, fire, whatever.
I think it's probably more of a convenience thing, that when it was, you know, when prices were lower, twenty bucks to get in the, I mean, it's like you just said, with the cost of diesel, right?
Well, I kinda agree with Steve, I like the idea. Like everything, including now from off.
Sure, I like that idea, too, but...
I never realized that was a problem.
There is a deal, Steve. Do, your motion would be to continue doing pool fills at a hundred and fifty dollars per load, and seven miles within our territory?
Yeah. Okay, when you add that, I'm gonna change it to two hundred dollars, then.
That would be, um, what are you doing?
What, me?
That would be times four. It's fifty dollars right now. That's what you want? I'm just making sure.
Yeah, well, I'm kinda, I know Brad, and so I'm kinda getting a feeling of how he feels, but I'm thinking, you know, I might win a lottery in a...
On your pool fill?
Sir, you wanna change your motion to two hundred dollars?
Yeah, I do, if they wanted to fill, uh, they'll pay it.
Okay, you have a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
My only discussion is, I, I feel like they're, like Brian's doing the majority of it, and after work, and, if they want to scratch it, I'd support that. That's just my...
No, that's fine. And maybe Steve may answer, maybe with your price, like, if you could scratch it, which is not, which would be helpful, so...
Any other discussion? I guess my only thing is, could you most ask Brad?
Um, I did ask Brad with the fire department, what they're, what, what they were leaning a certain way, and he said, no, they didn't care either way, but just as long as if they were gonna do it, they wanted more money.
Now, you said Brian, you mean Brad? You know, Brian, but Brian's doing, sorry.
Okay, the P, how does that work? I just thought of that, no, cause they're doing it after hours, uh, from what I just heard. Are they just giving a nine dollar?
The eleven dollar?
Eleven dollar?
Yes, and then the money goes to the fire department.
Any further discussion on the... All in favor, say aye. Uh, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
You have a tire rate. You have a tire rate.
No, it's three.
It's three, you all have.
What, what, what's it, three, two?
Yep, you're washing fast.
I don't wanna, you know, just pass and pass. If there's a problem, we can...
That's the point of these meetings?
Yes. No scratching.
So much for being invited to Christmas party.
Okay, the last thing for the fire department is, um, number four, uh, requests for donation, um, of ten percent funds for National Aid Out. On page twenty-one, I took the guidelines, how the city may spend a ten percent off the gambling funds, just for, um, refresher, but I did get a phone call, or returned a phone call from the state this afternoon, and, um, they said it's not possible.
No.
Yeah, it, we would have to donate to a 501(c)(3), and the Fire Relief Association is a 501(c)(4), and it's not, not good enough. And I asked him if there was any workarounds, and he couldn't. He said that was the only one he could think of, so...
Well, who else were trying?
Yeah, I thought as long as the check wasn't written out to a department, that was the goal, right?
Right, but it would have to be an organization that's a, a part of the sector.
We should all have this guide for cities and houses, we spend ten percent off gambling, memorized by now.
But, but if we can't donate, buy the product for that, then how are we donating the flower fund? Do you know what I mean, on T either?
I don't know, I haven't looked into it.
That's what we're doing there, buying the flowers. I mean, I don't care either way, but...
Do we buy flowers? Or do we give them money? So we buy flowers?
We buy the flowers and the product, where we, where we work for years.
Who says, who knows?
The flowers.
The flower club?
No.
But does that hurt? I haven't been here for that.
I think it's a great, great, I understand not giving money to the police department for national help, but if the city, in my opinion, was, if the city wanted to buy hot dogs and then product...
I asked him, because I thought, and he said no. However, it does say you can donate to the police department, doesn't it? It's fire department.
Yeah, fire, that's, fire, that's a reason, I'm confused, cause National Aid Out, it's police department.
So the fire, right?
Well, they collaborate with each other.
Yeah, but it's not, we could, we make some of them up, but I'm not gonna do it, but...
Where?
Started, it started for the police, the picnic, or um, the community, kids, the people that get together, so they would report, have trust on their police to, um, report crying back to the police department. That's where it started, and that was meant for...
Oh, on that one, was that the last department meeting for the fire department? I thought this would be a good possibility for them, so it wouldn't have to come out of the relief association, or you or them, or whoever funds it. I thought it was just a, you know, like a, another option, but... And I looked it up, and I know that we can, by resolution, we can solicit our donations for it, but...
Also, could they, could they use their fire money to put it on and then sell hot dogs or something like that, to get, as a fundraiser, or, I don't know, um... I just was wondering if that's something we could do.
I would, I would say no, but that, National Aid Out, there's no money involved, too. Do they mean, there's no money, they say, well, but you don't pay a dollar for a hot dog, and you get a free one or whatever.
So they can get people to donate stuff, money through the donation? Yeah, or, I mean, to donate hot dogs and...
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, great.
We also look at, maybe look at me and and Ryan, or something like that, who's on the...
Um, Al, reading this to answer your question about this fragrance bros, cause they're considered arts, and you can donate to arts. That's off the table.
Thank you, Brad, Cam.
Anything else for the fire department? Moving on. Police department.
Of course, on page twenty-two. The fifty-seven calls for the month, um, through the half, and then for the year. Three calls in the home. It's all there on the report. I was gonna suggest to have, have the National Aid help, but maybe we'll just hold up on that. If they're not sure about funding, so...
Um, I have a quick question now. On your reports here, burglary, that seven call, that's kind of alarming.
Well, you know, thefts could be anything from, um, car...
Oh, okay, so...
You know, how many reported their keys are missing, or...
Oh, sure, so, burglary, I just...
Yeah, I got it, the same category, burglary, I could divide them off.
Sure.
Was it just burglary, or probably the ends are all?
Sure. Thank you, Al.
Anything else for the police department?
Maybe a big week, obviously, with June thefts, you know, with the birthday party, and I on Sunday, or on Saturday, show up to the graduation on Saturday. It'll be a big day.
They're not gonna get bored, are they?
No. So, like, today I came in late, to kinda save my hours for the weekend, you know?
Well, we appreciate you, Al, and, and also knowing, you know, the heads up, obviously, it's very busy, and you've been busy, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, for what you do.
Toby, you're just coming on over to help out on Saturday night, for that thing?
That's great.
Yeah. Toby, just got an extra battery on?
Mm-hmm.
Moving on, public works. Your report section is twenty-three. You just opened on the CSS again, this one? Charles Sparks, maybe used for the bowling games and stuff, and, uh, about Minnesota Power. If you guys read it. We're still in, um, the solar house. We don't have a current back. We're still on the charging station, too. We give a little breeze, I don't know. What do we do with it? And the one that, you know, put, wrapped it under the tennis court, it's been humped, checked up, so it's well again.
Okay.
See people on, actually, like, pools. Any questions on that? Yeah? Um, flashbacks, uh, I sent you guys an email this morning, there's some of the details, we haven't got the filing rendition done yet. But we have the, the, and the features that are on that, the down payment. I think maybe a goal, and I'm just saying, not quick, cause it might get done this year. If you like them, I think permission to do that. You know, it's gonna be, like, on the floor, I think we come up with that money, through all services, to pull out special donations, or buy some of those stuffs. I guess, any questions on Vegas? Self-disputing or any...
It was very self-disputing, you know, you did a very thorough job of breaking everything down. I mean, write down into the labor and cost of materials, and the description of what's gonna go in. It's really exciting, you've been working on this for a very long time.
Not few unknowns yet. We almost made it through. I know you mentioned your assets up, like, uh, the NR one, that was having to be done by end of February and for next year, or something like that this year, we need to... We have to be at least another year to find out. I think if we wanted to have done this, this is probably the...
Move forward.
That was...
Maybe they'll say, ten years, but it's not...
Yeah.
And we might have some other orders going to, to add a few things up. We already talked about maybe we're spending out, we want to expand, just a little bit. Minnesota she, actually, is a, you know, are kind of excited that, um... Kind of fits around the tree, and that was the ideal, we're looking for, probably keeping the canopy being over top of it. It kind of worked out good.
Hmm, that's a brilliant idea. I was gonna ask, because Minnesota she, idea of a... That is brilliant, and, yeah, the floor is up, the floor plan, we call it. But with the, if you look at the aerial, you have a sidewalk coming in. It's a, it'll probably be the first of all, yeah.
There's some standards. It's up far high.
Yeah.
We're at the same level, we have to start a lecture again, but they could work with it.
So what do you need for this ticket rolling?
I guess permission to whiskey bond, along with it, same with any, any of our money, I guess.
Need a motion for anything other than...
I think, yeah, if you're willing to, to get them overall, just to get the...
To move forward, nothing right now where we're taking anything out of a fund, right?
Do you need any purchase, using the funds?
For that purpose? I think so.
It's already, no, they're already...
Okay. Resorted to...
Yeah.
Yeah, I still have to make a resolution to move the small community development funds or whatever it is, out of that fund and into the parks fund. I'll get to it next month, if we're correct, because I got a letter from the state saying that it was okay to do it and everything, I just haven't gotten a written resolution yet, so... I'll get that on the agenda for next one.
So is that something that we have to have, because we can make a motion to approve? The go-ahead with the splash pad?
We need an order, I think it'll take six, eight weeks to get this up, to be done, so just be able to get the okay.
So would it be something that'll be included by the end of the summer?
I sure hope so. What goal is that?
It's exciting.
Wait till after June, after the...
Sure.
The ball played and done, and tear everything up. Are you looking for a motion from us now? It'd be nice to just make sure it's forward, that the okay is...
Can I ask one more question? Part of that was coming out of the gambling fund, do we know what the gambling fund is at right now? We're not, sorry. Or...
Where is that?
Sorry. It's on page eleven, the gambling fund. It's at thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Thirty-five thousand, which is... And if you have any ideas we'd like to incorporate in this small, or if it's too far along, because...
Exciting.
Make it look nice.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the splash pad at Irving Congress Park.
In order in parts?
In order in parts. Go ahead with the continuing planning of the splash pad at Irving Congress Park.
As presented.
I will second that.
Any proof of discussion on the motion? Bruce, before we go any further, is the motion made, is that pretty much where you'd like to be right now?
I guess, yeah, as long as, as long as I can personally move it, that's...
Be done by the Fourth of July.
You can't make that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, same sign? Motion passed. Very exciting.
It's very exciting for...
Yeah, it's one of those things that's on the common plan, and...
Yes.
Yeah, great. This has been working out for a while, ten years, ten plus years?
It's going forward, you know, first estimate, and prices keep going up, so...
Sure.
Do you have anything else for us, Bruce?
I don't.
I do.
Anybody have anything for Bruce?
I do. As his liaison, I just want to point out, um, the congratulatory letter that he got from Bullock and hearing from Barbara Marks, um, is page twenty of your package. So, not only to Bruce, but also to Brian, for their assistance with my flat tire. They were wonderful, and I appreciate you letting council members know how much their kindness and help reflects on us, you know. So, yeah. Good job.
And you know what? She was excellent herself.
That's great to hear.
She was very, very...
I really like how she ends this letter, "Do well, be tiny." So, yes.
I think she should pick one.
Too much pressure.
So thanks for everything, Bruce.
Moving forward. Administration Department.
On page twenty-four, I have resolution twenty-two-five-thirteen, um, acknowledging the closure of three savings accounts. We have three savings accounts at First International, along with a money market savings account, and I quote, "The three savings account put all of the money in the money market account, just to earn a lot more interest."
Motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second. I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign? Motion carried.
And then, resolution number twenty-two-five-fourteen, um, acknowledging the transfer of funds. So I transferred four million dollars from the art checking account at the bank into the, um, 4M fund, which will be earning significantly more interest. We've already earned more interest on that than we have in a year at the bank, so...
In just, uh, since last month, which is very...
Do you need a motion to approve?
I will make that motion to approve.
I'll have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign? Motion carried.
Page twenty-six and twenty-seven, I put a copy of the letter, um, I had to send to a resident that it was discovered tampered with their water meter. I passed it, and that actually is a federal offense under the Clean Water Act. We're not pressing charges, but I just wanted you to be aware of the letter that was... No, no. There's a letter that was sent out, and I want the public to be aware that this is serious. You can't do that.
Are we mandated to report something like that, or...
No.
Okay.
So it doesn't basically... I mean, if it were, probably something that would harm the water system, yes.
Sure.
This is a liability to their meter, you know.
So, do we know how long that was going on?
Um, by the looks of the water usage, probably since December or January, um...
So do we do anything for...
Yeah, so it's spelled out in the letter, so I sent the outstanding balance, because that wasn't even current just for the service, and then I estimated the bill based on past water usage, and put that in there. And then it was two hundred and three dollars and eighty cents to, for the new meter. And that's already been put in. And then, um, so... Water bills are due June twenty-third this month, and, um, this person has until June twenty-third to pay and pull, or their service will be shut off, and I'm not willing to make that emergency.
Is there any penalty at all for doing something like that? Other than us pursuing against them?
We could draft an ordinance, um, for the future, if you would like to...
Problem is, you have to have intent. I'm not, we're not positive that she had intent. Um, you know, problems like water, water meter froze, she had a friend come over and fix it. Whether or not she knew that, or they knew that he went around it, we don't know. So the intent is really minimal to do charges at this point, but if she did that, that renews us for our costs.
The city should have been called. They shouldn't have hired somebody to do that without calling the city, so...
I think Chris can remember those that now for sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
She doesn't, she doesn't want to fill her pool, does she? She already did that.
Um, page twenty-eight is the letter that April was talking about, um, from Paul Lake. Sorry, I jumped the gun, Tim. We would just really like to express our gratitude to Bruce and Brian.
I'm sorry, I totally stole a thunder on that one. I was just excited about that letter too, because a lot of times, the stuff doesn't get shared, so I was really excited. It wasn't shared twice, so...
Anything else? Tammy, do you have anything else for us?
No.
Anybody have anything else for Tammy?
Yeah, I do. I think you went over and above on this money transfer. I mean, the interest, you can find that out later, is just tremendous, that we've been losing for years. This is something, really, that should have been done or caught by previous people. And I can't, I'm sure from all of us, thank you enough to catch that, because there's a lot of money that you saved the city.
It'll be a big deal for those that you want to...
Yes.
Thank you, Tammy. Yes, well said, Steve. You spoke for all of us. Good job, Tim. You want to talk about that?
Paulie, not with the mall, and she did a walk through, and, um, basically, come to see what we have with our issues, and we're waiting for her report back to see what happens. People there are, I guess. I think we, what is it, six, sixty days or something, for life, or something like that? No. She was really terrible, she was up in the attic, she was... She was looking for... Looking for a service there.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
Any other old business you'd like to talk about? Moving on, new business. Garden Club, request for donation, Fran.
Oh, thanks. So I'm Fran Cope, son of these guys, I'm all... I am a member of the Franklin's Club Garden Club. We have nine members, and we plant the mountain barrels, we plant the veterans park, the congress park, and the post office. A vote about in there last fall, yeah? It's been kind of demolished, so that's on our list of things to do, too. Just to kind of clean that up, add new soil, compost, buy bushes, and all that. And then we also take care of all the watering, weeding, um, and whatever needs to be done, we do that. So we're just asking for some funding. It's been a couple of years since we have to purchase... We've already purchased our plants for this year, but we started to think again about next year, so just asking for some donation.
Did you have an amount in mind that you were...
Well, not really. So, this year, so far, we have spent five hundred and forty-six dollars, that includes, we buy the soil, if we need concrete, so, but we don't really have to give out that. Fur visor, and then our plants. And this year yet, um... So our garden club members are all getting older, and it's getting more difficult. I'm gonna be looking for a new hose, a lightweight one, I don't know if Bruce has...